The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight, and we invite participation either remotely or in person. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at nvusd.org/board. The open session part of the meeting will begin at around 7:00 p.m. B, Public Comment on Closed Session Items. Before going into closed session, the board is available for public comment on closed-session agenda items. Ms. Green, do we have any public comment on closed-session agenda items?
There is no public comment on closed-session agenda items.
Thank you. Seeing that there are none, the board will now adjourn into closed session. Good evening. My name is Eve Reiser, and this is the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight, and we invite participation either remotely or in person. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at nvusd.org/board. Interpretation in Spanish is available for tonight's virtual board meeting. Our interpreters are Francisco Mesa and Claudia Lindgren. One of our interpreters will now translate the directions on our English channel, so our Spanish-speaking families may hear the instructions.
Si, muy buenas noches. Para interpretación en español por Zoom, por favor busquen el símbolo del mundo terráqueo en la parte baja de su pantalla que dice "Language Interpretation" o "Interpretación de idioma," y haga clic en "Español." En el submenú que dice "More" o "Más," puede optar por escuchar solo la interpretación al español al hacer clic en "Mute Original Audio" o "Silenciar el audio original." Por último, haga clic ahí para iniciar la interpretación en su idioma. Desde una tableta celular en Zoom, busquen tres puntitos con la palabra "More" o "Más", y bajo "Interpretación de idioma" elija "Español," y también tendrá la opción de escuchar solo la interpretación al hacer clic en "Mute Original Audio" o "Silenciar el audio original." Pulsa ahí en "Done," y listo. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, can we please start with an attendance roll call from Veda Morales, Executive Assistant?
Yes. Student Board Member Fish Leader.
Here.
Trustee Reiser.
Present.
Trustee Chu.
Present.
Trustee Hart.
Present.
Trustee Jankowicz.
Present.
Trustee Martin.
Present.
Trustee Water.
Present.
Quorum present. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us tonight for our NVUSD Board meeting. E1, Report on Closed Session. Trustee Hart, do you have a report on closed-session agenda items?
I do. For item D2B Personnel, the board took action in the settlement and general release agreement of certificated employee number 1551.
Thank you. E2, Flag Salute. I would like to take just a moment to formally welcome our new student board member, Hudson Fish Leader. Hudson, we're so happy to have you here. Thank you for your service, and your first act of service will be to lead us in the flag salute. Thank you so much. Excellent. Okay, E3 Announcement. This meeting is livestreamed and recorded via Zoom and will be archived on the district YouTube channel. For a detailed review of any meeting agenda item, the archived video can be referenced on the district's webpage at nvusd.org. The process for public comment can also be found on the district's webpage. E4, Approval of Agenda. Before we move to approve the agenda, I would like to make two proposed amendments. One is to pull item I5H, and the next is to move item J3A to after I, the consent agenda. So as amended, may I get a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second. So we have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstain? Motion passes. Now, we have E5, Approval of Minutes. E5A, the June 25, 2025 minutes.
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, we have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart, and Trustee Jankowicz, I believe you were not present at this meeting. So all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Abstain? Trustee Jankowicz?
Oh, sorry.
And Trustee Jankowicz abstains. Motion passes. E5B, the June 26, 2025 minutes, and we will have two abstentions there. Okay.
Move to approve. Second.
A first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. All in favor? Aye. Abstentions?
B.
So Trustee Jankowicz and Trustee Water. Okay, thank you so much. Motion passes. E6, Recognition of Visitors and Employee Organizations. Dr. Masetti, do we have any visitors in attendance?
Do not have any visitors in attendance this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. And that brings us to OF, Students of the Month. School is not in session yet. We are not recognizing any students for this meeting. G, Public Comment on Non-Agenda Items. Trustee Hart, did we receive any public comment on non-agenda items via email?
No public comments on non-agenda items were submitted via email at publiccomment@nvusd.org before 8:00 a.m. this morning.
Thank you. Before I open the floor to public comment on non-agenda items, I'd like to explain the rules that govern this area of the meeting. The Brown Act, open-meeting laws under which we are required to operate, prohibit board members from discussing items that you may bring up that are not on our current agenda. The reason for this legal restriction is to make sure that anyone who has an interest in a particular district business matter knows through the board's posted agenda when we will be discussing it as a board, so that they can be present and provide input on the item. We're very happy to have you here to let us know your concerns. Please know that while we cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda, we are listening to your voices, and we expect and know that our staff will follow up with us on issues raised by members of the community. Relevant to the remainder of the board agenda, please understand that the board listens and considers public comment on the agendized items during our meeting. However, public comment is not intended to be a two-way dialogue between the public and board members and/or staff, and therefore trustees will not respond to individual comments. This is in accordance with our meeting procedures. We invite members of the public to provide input via public comment per our Board Bylaw 9323 regarding meeting agenda items. We welcome and appreciate the public's engagement and input, and we thank you for being here. In sum, please know that your voice matters and makes a difference. Your public comment on agendized items might be referenced during our discussions and will be considered as we make decisions regarding agendized items. Okay. Is there any public comment for non-agenda items, Ms. Green, online?
There is no public comment on non-agenda items.
Okay, thank you very much. Seeing none. It's me. This brings us to item H, Reports. We'll start with H1, Board of Education and the Student Board Representative. Hudson, would you like to kick us off?
Yes, I would. Thank you, everybody, this evening for coming to see us. Once again, my name is Hudson Fish Leader. I'm currently attending Vintage High School as a senior, and I'm super excited to be sitting here tonight and talking in front of all of you. This summer was very busy for me, as I think many of it was for you guys. I spent a good chunk of my summer in Arizona at an accounting internship where I learned tax and finance. It was very hot, so I think you can all imagine how that would be. I worked with three amazing high schoolers who all came from different fields, and it was a great experience. When I came back here, I was fortunate enough to run with my high school cross-country team. We've run past a lot of the elementary schools and middle schools, and we've seen all of the construction, and I think we're all a little bit jealous, but we're also very impressed with what Measure B is doing, so cheers to that. And I'm also working with Mentis to kind of help apply different mental health awareness to not only high school students, but to students across the valley. I've spoken to my alternate, Zoe Griesen, who attends New Tech High School, and I'm impressed with what she's doing. I'm proud of her, and I want to congratulate her one more time. I'm super excited to work with her, and we're currently trying to get more students from Napa and American Canyon to help have some type of insight, so we can make our job a little bit easier and a little bit better. But other than that, I just want to thank all of the students who are helping the freshman orientation and help settle in the little ninth graders who are coming into high school. It's much appreciated, especially out of your busy summer, and just excited to be here, guys. Thank you.
Thank you so much, student trustee Fish Leader. Trustee Water.
And we're really glad to have you working with us. It's going to be a great year, I can tell. All right, well, I did miss the June 26 meeting. I was at San Francisco City Hall. My daughter was getting married, so I think I had a pretty good excuse. And I'm sorry I missed the thanks to our classified employees. I just want to say once again that I thought it was a wonderful graduation. Everything went so smoothly, and that's because we have great people working for us. And two, let's see, I attended several meetings with youth civic leaders who go to our schools. This is affiliated with the League of Women Voters, a nonpartisan organization. Then I also went to summer school graduation on July 9 along with Dr. Reddy, and that was, the students were really happy to graduate. You know, they are one happy group. It was another one of our pleasant, dignified graduations. And along with touring what used to be the Oxbow School, I went to the Napa Valley Education Foundation Summer Party fundraiser in Yottville, and it was enlivened by Dave Ruane and the Napa High School Choir performing. And it was frankly found it heartwarming to see so many people opening up their wallets and their hearts for our public school students. And then on Sunday, I went to Congressman Mike Thompson's annual event, and I talked about school issues with our state senator, Chris Cabaldin. And last night, I went to the summer interns graduation and heard a lot of enlightening and inspiring speeches from young people who, some of them might have found their life's path, working for us, and it was great. And I actually ran into one of my former students, Marissa Costaneda, who went to Napa Valley College, was a top student there, then went to UC Berkeley, top student there, got a master's degree at Harvard. I think she was the first one of my students who went to Harvard, so it was a nice reunion. And I have been checking out what's been going on with Measure B, and I just want to say too, and don't worry, secondary schools are coming next, believe me, and I just want to say, we are going to have some really proud, happy students entering school next week. Great job. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Trustee Water. Trustee Martin?
Last Saturday, August 2, I went to see Napa High's summer theater programs production of Anastasia. It was really, it was amazing to see what they put together in three weeks, because usually it takes a lot, six months, you know, months and months to put something like together, so it's very entertaining, really, really well done for such a short period of time. And then on Monday, I attended CSBA's ethics training, which was
Long.
Long, along with Trustee Jankowicz, but interesting and very important. So that concludes my report.
Thank you so much.
I'm sorry. And Trustee Water, the summer recovery graduation ceremony. I attended the CSBA webinar, Inside Look at the June Policy Update. I just met with Carrie Castro, our Pacer for Region 3, where we discuss state and federal funding concerns, as well as local concerns for Region 3, and she is excited, and she was invited and will be attending some of our ribbon cutting, so I'm very excited about that. I also took the mandated ethics training, which was very, very long. I must say that I enjoy driving by all the schools that were being touched by the bond this summer. The work really is transformative. It's much more than roofs and HVAC and classroom upgrades. It's pride in your school, it's positive campus culture, and it's engagement. Bond dollars really represent so much more than the construction that we see. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Hart?
All right. I would also like to welcome our new student board member, Hudson Fish Leader, from Vintage High School to the board. Actually, this was my first year being part of that selection committee, and I wanted to let you guys know this, not an easy job. Our local high schools have absolute rock star students that come through, and we got to see pretty much all of them come through that room that day, and it was amazing. So we saw and spoke to the best of the best of our schools during that process, and I just wanted to commend all the schools for all the efforts that have been put into these kids, because they're amazing, and we should all be very proud of them, and we're happy to have you here with us. I hope everybody enjoyed a restful time off and are ready for back-to-school next week. At my house, my youngest and last NVUSD student is preparing to begin middle school at Unidos, and she's very excited for that. We've had to try to figure out where to go shopping for back-to-school clothes. Now the Kohl's is closed, so we're figuring that out, probably getting up at a mall that she's never been at. And we're very excited to see the next stage of our DLI journey here at NVUSD. Also, over the summer, I did meet with our CSBA Pacer as well and spent some time getting to know her and finalizing Robyn's nomination for yet another term. Working on it, don't worry, we'll get there. And last, I'd like to also echo a thank you to our community for supporting our most recent bond, and a huge thank you to the Business Services Department for getting so much of that accomplished over the summer. It's very exciting. I know the kids are very excited to go back to these schools and see how beautiful they are, and you can definitely see the pride coming off of that. So thank you for everything that's been accomplished. Very much appreciated. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Chu?
So I took the summer off from the school board, but did a lot of catch-up work to do in my regular job. But in the meantime, I got to experience a little bit of what our students got to go through as part of Stars Network, because my older son actually participated in the Vanderbilt Summer Academy as part of the Stars Network offerings, and he absolutely loved it. He now wants to go to Nashville for college, which I'm okay with.
Funny how that works.
It's funny how it works, yes. But, you know, I'm just very grateful that he has found, this is how he said it, he said that, you know, getting to the end of said that, you know, getting to the end of high school, you're kind of ready to be finished. I think Hudson probably can attest to that. And so having this extra experience of a little taste of what might come next year is something that I think invigorated his love of learning again, and just the drive of wanting to, you know, get to the next level. So very grateful for the partnership that we have with Stars Network, for Vanderbilt University, for having this opportunity for our students, and I'm actually looking forward to if any of the students that went to the University of Chicago program, I would love to hear about that program also.
We have a board presentation on September 12.
Oh, that's awesome.
Or 11th, I think it's Thursday.
That's awesome. I'm just really happy that we have this partnership with Stars, and I think it's going to do well for our students. My other son actually took advantage of what's called Drone Camp. That's a collaboration between Napa Valley College and 4H and UC Davis, I think it's UC Agricultural, I forgot what the name is. Anyway, it's part of the University of California system, and they had a week of camp at the Napa Valley College where they got to learn about how to fly drones, how to monitor crops, and just an amazing next step. It's kind of reminding me of our Ag Innovation Center that we are trying to put in, and we are putting in, not trying, we will be putting in, in Vintage High School. And so it's kind of like a little taste of what's to come, and I'm grateful of that partnership and the ability of our students to participate. I know there were quite a number, I think about 20 students, that were able to go, and my son really enjoyed that, too. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. For my report, I pretty much took the July recess as a recess from school board responsibilities, with the exception of taking up the invitation of two representatives from the NorCal Carpenter's Union who reached out to me and were interested in meeting, and we had a really productive conversation about the potential for their collaboration and contribution to our CTE programming here in NVUSD. So thanks to Chris Palomo and Dan McCullough for that. On August 6, just yesterday, I was here twice at the district office, once for our regular board president meeting ahead of every board meeting that I have with Dr. Masetti, and then I came back in the evening with Trustee Water to attend the summer internship graduation ceremony, and I'll just echo what Trustee Water shared, which is it was just a really beautiful and meaningful celebration of what could potentially be a life-changing experience for dozens of students. We're really grateful for this collaboration with the Napa Valley Ed Foundation, a shout out to Megan McCall, who is sort of the spearheads the instruction of the cohort of students, and it was just, it made me really proud to think about that opportunity, those sets of opportunities that we are making available to the students in NVUSD. You could see in their little brief remarks that they shared as they came across and got their certification, that they had really grown their confidence, they'd grown life skills, they'd grown, you know, relationships, they commented on the gratitude that they felt for their mentors, and, you know, I really think that that's a two-way street, where the adults who take on mentoring them, both within our organization, because we host a number of mentees within different departments in our school district, but also many thanks to the collaborators in the community. We had several construction firms, an architecture firm.
Hotels.
Silverado does a big hospitality cohort of student internships. So that was just really affirming and wonderful to see. So along with the amazing pride and progress that we've seen with all the busyness implementing our Measure B school bond progress, and the wonderful reports back from our Stars College Network, first cohort going through their summer program, it was just another celebration of the great work that's happening in the organization. So feeling, kicking off this first school board meeting of the year, feeling very proud of our organization. Okay, so that concludes the trustees' report, and that would bring us to the special, the representative reports, H2A, the Special Education Community Advisory Committee.
We have not yet met.
Okay. H2B, the City of American Canyon liaison?
We have not met.
And the H2C, the City of Napa liaison?
We have not met.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to H3, Superintendent and Executive Staff Reports.
Great, thank you, President Reiser. So good evening, NVUSD trustees, staff, and community. Again, welcome back. I'm truly thrilled to rejoin the governance team here at the dais as we prepare to launch the 25-26 school year. Last week, we had the pleasure of welcoming back our district and site administrators, so our full management team here in NVUSD, during our annual leadership conference. The gathering began with a focus on safety, highlighting the rollout of our new crisis alert system and updated emergency protocols. We know that physical safety is a non-negotiable foundation for effective teaching and learning, and we're so grateful for the board's support as we scale this new system in these first few weeks of school. It's a great pairing with so many modernized campuses to also know that we are taking safety systems to scale in the 25-26 school year. We also took time with the management team to celebrate the successful first year of our recently adopted strategic plan that will guide us from 24 to, 2024 to 2029. The leadership conference featured deep discussions also on leadership development through our focus with the partnership with the Arbinger Institute, and cultivating and nurturing culture that supports both teaching and learning. The Human Resources Team also unveiled our new platform there for teacher evaluation, which is fantastic. And our Instructional Services Team, the division spent a full day working alongside the principals and assistant principals on an additional day to deepen our shared understanding of our emerging instructional framework related to Strategy 1, multi-tiered systems of support, which will be critical for intervention, academic and behavior intervention for our students, and then, of course, professional learning communities, which is critical to getting all the instructional improvement work done across the district. I'd also like to echo Trustee Water and President Reiser's pride for the summer mentor program and the partnership we have with the Educational Foundation. This is actually an extraordinary program that just continues to have tremendous impact. I had the honor of attending both completion ceremonies. One was at Silverado earlier in the week, and then last night here at Evans Auditorium, where we celebrated the students who participated in the seven-week paid internship program that also provides them college-bearing credit for Napa Valley College. So it's kind of a, you know, a win-win there. They're getting college credit, and they're getting the job experience paid. I'm sure that Dr. Reddy will probably provide more details, but I just want to highlight how meaningful it is that NVUSD continues to create access to real-world career readiness opportunities for our students. You should just tell the students were full of gratitude to have this experience in the summer. It was really something meaningful for them to do in the summer over the seven-week period. As we look ahead and toward the opening of schools on Wednesday, August 13, so for those of you that don't know, that is the first day, please be there and be there on time. The energy among staff is incredibly positive and inspiring. Let's shift our attention, thinking about the opening school just for a minute, from instruction to construction. Did you catch that?[1116.58][1116.58](laugh) Like trustees said, that have been, you know, driving around the city of Napa and even in American Canyon, I had the opportunity to do the same and visit and tour our construction sites with Assistant Superintendent Rob Manguala and the Director of Maintenance, Albert De Souza. I was just absolutely blown away by the progress and what has been accomplished this summer. And I do really feel compelled to make sure, you know, at this first board meeting, to just inform the public that it is very rare that a school district is able to execute on their facilities plans the first summer after a bond passes. I just want to remind everyone that it hasn't even been a year since the bond passed. Most school districts, it's typical, every bond I've ever worked with prior to this one, you always take the first year to be a planning year, and you plan so that you're preparing to execute on the facilities plan that second summer using, you know, the proceeds from the bond. And we have, of course, we always try, we're always aiming for continuous improvement, and we're striving for excellence. That is one of our organizational values. And we went into this Measure B campaign wanting to be ultra-prepared, you know, based on the work of the last few years, based on the fact that we came in 2022 and, you know, it didn't pass, but we were able to just be poised and ready and prepared. And because of that, and the work that happened here in the boardroom in the fall, and just getting all of our contracts queued up and approved, the organization of Assistant Superintendent Rob Manguala, Kelly Jurgensen at Vampeld, we were able to do this extraordinary thing, which is, for summer, 11 school sites have been touched in our first summer. It is just, I have to note how special and unique and accomplished we must feel because of that. So from the exterior modernization projects completed at the Summer 7, which is what we called them here in Napa, to the transformational work that's underway at Donaldson Way in American Canyon, there is so much happening on that campus. The modernization improvements are remarkable and actually very long overdue. So we're so excited to be able to, you know, give this to the community. The most impressive site, honestly, that I visited was Silverado Middle School. Mostly, I mean, all the schools look fantastic, but Silverado is a very large campus, so the fact that we were able to take improvements and modernization to scale was just really impressive and extraordinary. The campus, you start to see when you work with these campuses that many of them have solid bones, even though they were built a long time ago. And Silverado, I would say arguably, has the most breathtaking view of any public school in the state of California. It is undergoing these dramatic upgrades, built upon these really solid bones of the, you know, structures of the building, and it really feels that when you're on the campus, you're honoring its legacy, but also incredibly excited about its future. So thank you to the team for all the hard work, and of course, a heartfelt thank you, like our trustees have said, to the Measure A2 voters in American Canyon, the Measure B voters in Napa. It is just fantastic at these times to have the school bonds necessary, the dollars necessary to do the work that our students deserve on their campuses. The support of the community is just making scalable improvements possible. It is also a first in NVUSD where we are touching so many school communities simultaneously. It's not concentrated improvement in one school, in one community, but we are taking it to scale. It's spread across the city. It shows that we, as a school district in our community, can link arms and center education and say that our students deserve facilities that are modernized and safe, and that just positions everybody to be thrilled about the learning that can take place in those buildings. We're excited, I am so excited about next week when our staff, our families, and then, of course, our students arrive on the campus to see these long-overdue upgrades. I think that they're going to just be in awe and stand up a little taller because of the fact that adults in the community care about their campuses and their learning environments. Just one last plug, NVUSD Future in Focus podcast launches August 15. In this district, we have a deep commitment to communication and engagement, and we're always thinking about innovative ways to get the message out about the strategic work that we're doing here in the district, as we're on this long, long view, right, based on our vision, improvement journey as a school district, where we just want to strive for more and more excellence. So as we move forward with our 15-strategy strategic plan in the immediate five years, we are more dedicated than ever to keeping the community informed on the progress that we're making, and we want to do it in new and innovative ways. So our new podcast, NVUSD Future in Focus, is a key part of this commitment. We're going to dabble with it. It's an experiment, but we hope it's well-received. It's a space where we can share clear and consistent information in a new format while also amplifying the voices of our students. We actually did some episodes with students, and then, of course, key staff around particular topics that are of interest to the parent community, but also to just the community at large. The podcast will help strengthen our community connections and highlight the great teaching and learning happening throughout the district, and you're also going to see, when you hear from our students, that we produce incredible graduates, and we have fantastic students. I think Trustee Hart said it about our applicants for the trustee seat. We just have extraordinary young people, which, with such potential, doing already amazing things. So wait till you hear from the eighth graders that we did a podcast with. They were pretty amazing. Join us on August 15 as we launch our first episode, AI in Education: Friend or Foe. So what else? Finally, thank you to all our staff. Some of them are in the room and lead the teams that get our schools ready, so I just want to give a heartfelt thank you here in the boardroom. Our staff worked so hard to get these 26 campuses ready. It has been complicated this year with construction at so many of the sites. It has required patience, collaboration, hard work, and it's been great to see a summer with so much work. Usually you would think that you would walk onto these campuses, and our support staff that get these campuses ready for the students would be exhausted and feeling like, oh, it's so much, it's been so complicated, construction, doing floors, while there's all this, I mean, all the things, right? And the opposite is true. This is the first time in my, you know, every year, everyone's great, but this year, you can sense the positive energy and the excitement on campus, because I think people are so thrilled about everything that's getting done, at the pace that it's getting done, and at the level of quality that it's getting done. So I wish everyone a successful and inspiring start to the school year. And with that, I'll turn it over to the Assistant Superintendents, and we'll start with Assistant Superintendent Dana Page, who oversees the Human Resources Division.
Thank you. Good evening, President Reiser, Board of Trustees, Student Representative Fish Leader, and Dr. Masetti. On Tuesday and Wednesday, we welcomed 85 new certificated employees to our specialized two-day onboarding academy. Throughout the event, attendees learned strategies and tools to support social emotional learning, took a deep dive into the foundational California standards for the teaching profession, and reflected on their start-of-year plans and how they will create environments where all students feel valued and supported. They also received helpful employment information, including an overview of the benefits and responsibilities of working at NVUSD. The more technical side, attendees received their laptops, participated in hands-on training with the Promethean Board, and learned how to communicate through Parentsware. I'd like to thank Director Kate Gogger for orchestrating this fantastic start for our new certificated employees. She brought together a team of presenters from Instructional Services, Communications, Technology, and Human Resources. We are so appreciative of them, and Dr. Masetti, who started the event with an outstanding overview of our strategic plan and celebrated recent district accomplishments. Overall, our new certificated employees left with valuable ideas and the reassurance that they have chosen a great school district to work for. I would also like to give a special thank you to our summer intern, Athena Morris, who was a tremendous help all summer long. She quickly adapted to every task we gave her and completed everything with great attention to detail. We would love to keep her, but she will be returning to her full-time role as a senior at New Tech High School. The summer internship program run by NVEF was a big success again in our office, and we were pleased to be a part of it. Thank you, and this concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Next, we have Dr. Monica Reddy, our Assistant Superintendent of the Instructional Services Division.
Good evening, President Reiser, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Dr. Masetti, and Student Board Member Fish Leader, and the NVUSD community. I'm excited to start this evening with our NVUSD vision for future-ready students and share their experiences this summer becoming competent, compassionate, and adaptable adults. First, our partnership with Stars College Network continues to thrive. Stars counselors held 83 one-on-one college admissions sessions with NVUSD students this summer. More than 20 students participated in summer fly-in programs across the country, including an inspiring trip to the University of Chicago, where students explored deep-dish pizza in downtown Chicago with Marjorie Bennett and her team from the University of Chicago. One student described the Vanderbilt fly-in as life-changing. We look forward to welcoming Stars for a week-long visit in October, including a district-wide college fair. Additionally, as you've heard this evening, the summer mentorship program wrapped up this week in partnership with the Napa Valley Education Foundation and many local businesses in the community, including Napa Valley Unified School District. We celebrated students who served alongside district professionals in communications, human resources, maintenance and operations, transportation, and extended learning. These internships provided hands-on experience and supported growth in our students gaining that graduate portrait competencies, especially adaptive learners, innovation, collaboration, solution-seeking, and career readiness. Thank you to the NVUSD staff who mentored our students for seven weeks this summer and gave them a taste of their fields. Later this evening, the College and Career Readiness Team is thrilled to recommend guaranteed admission agreements with both Cal State East Bay and Sonoma State University for A-to-G eligible NVUSD seniors. This opportunity offers unprecedented access to California State universities and reflects our district's commitment to opening doors for every student. Our youngest learners continued their growth and achievement this summer through extended learning opportunities. Approximately 1,500 students participated in enriching programs across eight NVUSD school sites and two Boys and Girls Club clubhouses led by our partner organizations. organizations. Students enjoyed a wide range of engaging activities, field trips, and speakers. These programs are more than enrichment. It is also a time for intensive intervention. Our Summer Scholars Program invited 393 students for a three-week academic support session with 285 students receiving high-impact tutoring in math and language arts from a team of 34 certificated teachers. Additionally, 49 incoming kindergarteners with limited or no preschool or TK experience participated in a 10-day first-step kindergarten prep program at three school sites, where they engaged in play-based and social emotional learning while getting familiar with the classroom environment. NVUSD partnered with the Valdez Math Institute to provide an intensive five-week program for students entering grades five through eight, who were one to four grade levels behind in math. Hosted at Napa Valley College to promote college aspirations, the program offered 23 days of instruction, seven hours per day, equivalent to a full academic year of math. I am so proud of our 100 students who attended. Credentia teachers, supported by trained assistants, led the instruction, and 100 students completed the program, showing an average math improvement of .8 to 1.2 years. Our students are not the only learners this summer. As we begin the 25-26 school year, the Instructional Division is energized by a successful launch of key initiatives. Safety continues to be a top priority as we launch the 25-26 school year. The Student Services and Technology Teams are supporting the district-wide training and implementation on CentiGix Crisis Alert through active participation in staff meetings and site trainings throughout August. These efforts will help ensure consistent understanding of school safety expectations and protocols across all campuses. Also, this week marked the exciting launch of the High Impact Instructional Team with 65 committed teachers, coming together to begin a two-year journey in support of NVUSD's Strategic Plan Strategy 1. This initiative is focused on developing a district-wide instructional framework grounded in the gradual release of responsibility model. On the first day, participants engaged in rich conversations centered on the mindsets and tools needed to deliver gradual release of responsibility, and together they built a shared understanding of what an instructional framework is and the strategies that are rooted in it. The professional learning is a practice-based model. Teachers collaborated to plan and develop lessons to their peers, allowing for immediate feedback and refinement, and this cycle of modeling, planning, teaching, and reflecting will remain central to our work together over the next two years. We are excited to wrap up this busy week with staff and grateful for our collective and continued focus on high-impact instruction. We look forward to welcoming our students back next week. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Ready, for that thorough report. And now we have Assistant Superintendent Rob Mangwala, who oversees Business and Operational Services.
Good evening. I have a number of presentations tonight, so my update today will be very brief. So I'll just start with my eight, eight departments and construction manager are working overtime, working through this weekend to make sure that everything is ready to go for, for school and specifically for tomorrow, right? So we did say that all the teachers at the sites with the construction could come back tomorrow. So I know Kelly has been out to Silverado, I think, three, three times today to make up, make sure that things were cleaned up. She sent me pictures all day long of, of just the tremendous change just from, I think it was Wednesday, Dr. Masetti, we went out and looked at Silverado, and so just amazing work is happening. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Mangwala. And President Reiser, that concludes staff reports for the evening.
Thank you so much. And then that brings me to H4, the Facilities and Bond Program Update.
It's probably related to the work that you're doing today.
I was picking up trash earlier. There was no time for hair. All right, there we go. All right, as always, we are anchored in strategic goal number 14. So we started with an old, familiar picture from the bond campaign. So this is West Park Elementary School, where we're doing exterior paint and drainage repairs. As you can see, the flooding has been remedied through a series of catch basins and trench drains that were installed between the portables. So that was a big step forward. Along with that, the entire site got painted, and they are now in the process of connecting out to the street.
It's a drain to nowhere right now because the city is redoing the street. I don't know if you've seen the construction that's out there, but literally the storm pipe was on the sidewalk up until a couple of days ago.
Yep. So other than that, we had a really great partner with Murray Construction, and we got to get this work nearly complete, and we're ready to connect. All right, some more before and after ugly pictures of old roofs in each HVAC. That's at Phillips Elementary, and then some after photos at some of the other sites. So this was our five-site project with Core Construction, another amazing partner this summer. And we replaced roofing HVAC and did exterior paint at five elementary school sites. So you can really see the difference in this picture of what things looked like before and what they look like now. So at those five sites, we'll be welcoming teachers back tomorrow. Contractors will be onsite for the rest of the week and into early next week on outdoor stuff that they're still finishing up. All right.
I'll jump in a little bit. So this is my favorite site out of all of them. They, all the work has been amazing, but just the transformation for Silverado, and like Dr. Masetti put out there, it just, it has really good bones. It has just, you know, the cinder block buildings, the paint. I prefer blue. There's a little bit of debate about it, but we ended up with green on the trim. And so you might notice that the body color is the same, but it looks very different. So if you look at the sites with the blue trim, that the silver polish actually has a little bit of blue in there. And so you'll notice that the body looks a little bit blue. So it's, it just turned out really well. I, I really didn't anticipate this much concrete work being done and this many contractors. Like the number of people that are running around there, it's, it's just, it's been like watching a beehive being built. So it's, it's kind of looked like that. And so, and then all of a sudden, it's nice and neat. And so it's amazing. We still have more work to go at Silverado. So just as a reminder, we're working on the quad, not part of this project, and we're working on the parking lot. And so those two things will, together, will just completely transform the view from there. So when you pull up as, as a community member, going into a new park lot, parking lot, looking up at the quad, we're talking about being able to just take the stage, it's really a stage that's sitting outside of the cafeteria, and then develop that into a stage where maybe music can occur, have some, some grass in the center area there in the quad. So we have some-
Haven't we talked about this during the visit? You said outdoor amphitheater feel.
Outdoor amphitheater type thing with the, with the stage there. Essentially what we're doing, when you turn and you look, if you look at the cafeteria, it's a natural stage there. I mean, it's, that's a dream at this point. We're not, we're not there yet, but like, since they're there, it kind of makes sense. So a place where they could play music, just looking at that amazing view of the valley there. And just so, again, lots of work to do still, but very excited about it. Next slide?
One, one other comment on Brown's Valley. So the picture on the left is Brown's Valley. As you guys remember, we did a lot of work there last summer. So because of that, there was an opportunity to do a little more paving at Brown's Valley that really needed it, like all of our sites. So if you stop by there, you will notice that there's some more paving that happened because we were only doing HVAC this summer and the paint, but not the roofing piece. So.
So Brown's Valley, when you see it, it's probably, you know, it's basically, it's all the paving they're going to receive. It's like 95% brand-new pavement there. Looks amazing, especially when you walk in from the back gate. Next slide?
Oh, too far. There we go. All right. So at Vishy, I'm sorry, I've got some pictures here from Vishy and from McPherson and Shear. So giving you some examples of that new exterior paint. And then also Shear, if you recall, had sort of a faux tile roof red, didn't look so great. So here's images of the new shingles that got put on at Vishy, and then some of the new roofing at McPherson, as well as some of the new HVAC equipment. All right, at American Canyon, you can see those new matching gray roofs at the middle school now. So everything really aligns with the new facility that we built a few years ago, which is really nice. The campus looks a little more cohesive. And also at Canyon Oaks, we set two new, brand-new portable classrooms, and we also are replacing all the HVAC units in the classrooms. So that's an example of the closet unit that exists in each one of the classrooms that's being replaced, and they are wrapping up that work as we speak. All right, American Canyon Middle School Track and Field Replacement, it was always the plan that that would bleed into the school year a little bit. So that is currently under construction. On the left, you can see how worn out that track had become. And if any one of you have been on it, you've noticed it, pieces coming up. So they're starting the process of recoding it with the new product. They'll also be replacing the turf. All right, you want to do this one?
Redwood, a project that's taken, it's taken about a year. So we, we started talking about it about this time last year, why I brought the architect for the design. And so it's been quite a lot of work. So this soil does have, like, a lot of soil. Napa has liquefaction. So it took a little extra work. They actually had to put down a plastic, I don't know what you call it.
Geo grid.
A geo, a geo grid. It's like plastic from soda cans, I guess. It looks like that. They put it on the ground, they put extra dirt on it, and it kind of keeps the soil from moving a little bit. And so Dan from Atlas Peak, big shout out to Atlas Peak. So he has done just tremendous work. He's worked on three sites for us, and every time I go out, he's, he's working at a site. So today, he was out there working. He barely would come over and say hi to me because he's too busy. So I went and I thanked him for all of his work. He said, yeah, Rob, I'm working six days a week, 12 hours a day to get it done. So we still anticipate that it'll be done before school starts. So they might be literally putting the lines on it early next week, I think is the plan. But yeah, it'll be done. Next slide. And so summer planning. So this is the, kind of the big announcement. So we went forward with a very aggressive plan for our elementary sites. We understand the importance of, of making our classrooms, I'll use the term warm, safe, and dry. Like, we can't have roofs that leak. And I've really struggled in just talking to others with Kelly, like, which school site should go next? Should we do Napa High next? Should we do Vintage next? Should we do Redwood next? We have Valley Oak, and we have Stonebridge. And so, or should I do part of one school next? And so we started looking at it, and you know, based on the success that we've, that we've already had, we're going to recommend at this point that we just get it all done. And so we're going to get it all done in one summer. It's going to be really hard, it's going to be really, really hard. We're going to have to sell, really hard. Can I put in another really? And then we'll need to sell the bonds earlier because we're literally burned through all of that first $70 million pretty quickly here. And then we'll, at that point, we're going to have to slow down a little bit because we're going to have, we might not be able to sell the next batch of bonds as quickly. So, but yeah, we're starting the work already. You may have noticed that we've already brought architect contracts to the board. And so we're already working with architects, working on the design, which means that we will be ready to submit to DSA early. Our plan is to publish the RFP for the general construction contractors, or we'll call them the lease-leaseback contractors. So we anticipate bringing contracts to the board in September or October, and then they're, they're off to the races and need to start bidding the work. Next slide. Is that it? Thank you. Questions? I know. You'll need it, yeah.
Any questions or comments from trustees?
Super awesome. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. We're excited.
Yeah.
Lots of ribbon cutting.
Lots of money on ribbon, right?
Yeah, I know, on your calendars in the month ahead.
And thank you for your vision of the assertive approach to just getting as much progress done as possible, as quickly as possible, because it's sort of an impossible bind to be in to say, oh, well, this school needs it more, so then these students are going to have to wait another whole year. So it's incredibly exciting that we're going to do, do it again, have a really, really, really hard but productive summer next summer. And on behalf of the students who are going to benefit, we're just incredibly grateful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have a question. What's the secret to getting a contractor to build, finish a project on time when you have a hard deadline?
That's a good one. So I'll, I'll attempt this, but then I'll address something else, too. So in our contract, we have something called liquidated damages, meaning, meaning that if you don't get to a certain point, like, they need to give us money. That's basically what it comes down to. So that's the biggest thing. And it's also, it's the nature of the industry, the people who bid on these projects. So there are really high-quality contractors that bid on. They know they only have 43, 43 days. When I heard it from Kelly, I'm like, what? It's really only 43 days in summer? It's 43 workdays in the summer. And so that also includes, I mean, they end up working on the weekends and things like that. And then just a little, just like a little word about a reminder. So there's still going to be little things that happen, right, where we have to go back and forth. There are change orders that we added. There's areas where, you know, I stuck a wall at Vishy, it just looked horrible. So like, we asked them to redo it. Or one at Brown's Valley, and you'll see stuff like that, or little bits of paint and stuff like that. So there's still going to be light work that'll happen on the weekend. The teachers won't see it during the day. It'll happen off hours. And so that'll probably continue for the next, what do you think, the next month or so?
And then one, one other comment on the success with the contractors. So, so Rob talked a little bit about sticks, so I'll talk a little bit about carrot, and say that it's also relationship-based. You want vendors who want to come and work for a district that has a good experience, that they're treated fairly, and also that they're paid on time. So those are all things, Napa has a very good reputation for that. And so therefore, we get a lot of people who want to participate and do business with us. So that helps a lot.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for that incredibly uplifting update. Okay, that brings us to I, approval of the consent agenda. Background information on these items is provided to the board prior to the meeting. A common motion takes action without discussion on roll call vote unless discussion of items is requested by a board member.
I will move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Is there any public comment on the consent agenda, Ms. Green?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, seeing none, could we please have a roll call vote, Ms. Morales?
Yes, Student Board Member Fish Leader.
Aye.
Trustee Reiser.
Aye.
Trustee Shu.
Aye.
Trustee Hart.
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee Water.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morales. So going by the amended agenda, we will now move to item J3A, the operational response to climate change and progress on related projects in NVUSD.
And the community regarding the district's work to reduce their impact on climate change. With me today, I have a number of directors from my division, who I'd like to just quickly introduce for the public stake. I know you all know them all, but go ahead.
Good afternoon, Dr. Or, good evening, Dr. Masetti, trustees, Hudson. Transportation Department has been doing quite a bit of, oh, okay, sorry. Yes, I'm the Director of Transportation, Justin Vinyan. Thank you.
My name's Kristen T. Kell. I'm the Food Service Director.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Jordan Michaels. I'm the Chief Technology Officer for the district.
Good evening. I'm Susan Miller, the Director of Enrollment and Accountability.
And I'm Peter Boo, Director of Research Data and Assessment.
Thank you. So our climate change work is, next slide, please. Sorry, I can't see the presentation. Thank you. So our climate change work is aligned with Strategic Plan Strategy 14, improve and maintain our facilities. The outcomes are improving and maintaining our facilities to ensure that students, staff, and the community have access to safe, modern facilities that meet the current and future needs, and explore more sustainable practices for facilities that can operate under adverse conditions. Specifically, Goal 14.3 focuses on considering the impact on the environment when designing and purchasing new equipment and facilities improvements. Given that school districts have, dollars are very limited for our facilities, our goal is to keep the financial impact neutral or very limited to the greatest extent possible. For example, the district was able to receive grants to pay for the majority of the costs of our electric buses. So that, that's an example of where we're doing something to change climate change, but then we're also considering the financial impact for the district. Another example are our solar panels, which will pay for themselves in about five to eight years. Next slide?
Next slide. The district has and continues to make substantial efforts to mitigate our impact in climate change, including expanding our renewable energy, energy-efficient bulbs and equipment, reducing consumption, our recycling programs, environmentally-friendly cleaning products, and responsible consumption and waste management. Next slide. As part of our system portrait, we're working on resilience as a district. We adopt best practices to reduce our environmental impact and increase sustainability of our building practice and operations where economically feasible and well-established practices have been proven. We aim to make all of our campuses and other facilities environmentally resilient through our choices around heating, cooling, energy uses, and materials. Next slide. So this slide shows our solar expansion. This is a picture of a lot of the drilling that happened this summer. And so who would have known during summer construction is really hard to hire a drilling company? So we actually needed to go through three different drilling companies to get our soil samples done. So a big part of the pre-work that we do for this as a part of the planning, in Napa, you have to test the soil. And so this is an example of a drill rig where they're drilling down, taking a soil sample, and then we need to have somebody analyze that before we go through the final design for our solar structures. The solar structures are pretty simple, they're not very complex, but this is just some example of some of the work that needs to happen. When we're done, we'll have the solar energy installed at 10 elementary schools. It's projected to offset 75 to 80% of our electricity, which is, it's an enormous number, right? As a district to be able to get to a number that high. So again, we're in the midst of design, we've, it's kind of all over the board depending on the school. We've submitted for some permits, we're starting to hear back, and construction will begin in fall of 2025, and we must finish by April. So that's why it will not wait till next summer. And we anticipate that the impacts will be minimal, that the actual work that goes on in the parking lot, once it starts, it goes by pretty quick. It's about drilling holes, putting in pillars, and building the pre-made structures. Next slide. So the district utilizes heat pump and HVAC units where appropriate, or I should say, heat pump HVAC units where appropriate, and when they meet the system needs. And so using a heat pump is not appropriate for all buildings. And so where it is appropriate, we do utilize them to the greatest extent possible. So for example, the vast majority of our portables use heat pumps. So that's an example of where they're used. The big systems that sit on the roofs typically aren't, so it's just, it's related to cost inefficiency. Next slide. So another thing that we can speak to is our existing HVAC units are definitely end-of-life. I'm sure you've heard the stories about HVAC units not working, because they're not efficient either. And so when you're just going through the action of replacing your older HVAC units that are 20 to 30 years old, and they're inefficient, just by putting in newer units, you will utilize a lot less electricity. And so just the work we did this summer at the 11 sites is part of our climate change work by picking efficient units. Next slide. So new roofing also comes into play. New roofing, it's a lot more efficient. You'll notice that a lot of the colors are white, it's reflective, where we can do it, where it makes sense. It's better insulation, it's warmer when it's supposed to be warm, and it's cooler when it's supposed to be cool. So that also adds a big difference. Next slide. So facilities control, so this is something we've been working on for quite some time, but since we didn't have the bond money, it is not universal across the district. And so these are Pelican controls. What they do is it allows the school district to set heating and cooling standards across the district, and then teachers have the ability to override it by, I think it's four degrees. And so what that does is it makes sure to turn off the HVAC units in the middle of the night, so we're not paying to heat or cool in the middle of the night. So we find that it works really well. All of our school sites that had summer construction had this installed. So another area where, again, if you add up all the other sites that we have to do, and we get all this work done in the coming summer, we'll be done with this by, this also by the end of this coming summer. Next slide. So battery-powered equipment. So battery-powered equipment's actually changed a lot just in the last six months. So I experienced it myself. One of the things I bought for the first time was a chainsaw. And I did not want to deal with the gasoline with it, and I started looking at the electric chainsaws. They work really, really well. The new battery-powered equipment, just from when Albert and I started speaking about it, we started looking at them at the beginning of last year. And so we're finding that the, a lot of the battery-powered equipment now, they do have, they have, they definitely have some uses. So some of them are slightly different. So for now, we'll probably still need the big gas-powered blowers, for example, when you're doing a lot of stuff outside. But in the smaller areas in front of the classrooms, these electric blowers, they work really, really well. And so part of the challenge is not just usage, but it's how quickly they charge and some of the costs that are associated with the battery packs. But all of that has definitely come down, and the technology has improved by leaps and bounds in the last couple of years. Next slide. So lighting, so we've spoken about this conversion to LED lighting, and so this is another project that's very substantial. It's turned out to take much longer than we anticipated, and so the lights that we bought, they work in our existing fixtures, but some of the light fixtures need modification. And so some of the lights are so old that it requires an electrician to take the ballast out. So they're designed to work in modern lights with a ballast or without a ballast, but some of our lights are so old, we need the electrician to come out there and do that. And so we're trying to do it in a manner that it doesn't disrupt the school site. The first site, we did Vichy, we replaced all the lights, and then as we did it, we found out, wow, some of these just aren't working, it's not, we can't do this, we can't be disruptive, and so we had to kind of slow down. I would anticipate that this project, because it is, it's an overtime project, we're not paying an outside vendor to do it. We wanted to use this as an opportunity to have our employees do the work and pay our custodians overtime, so they're doing this in addition to their current work. And so that'll happen over the, continue to happen over the coming year. And we know LED, it lowers heat emissions, and they're much more efficient. Next slide. So in the Operations Department, so the district maintains an active partnership with Napa Recycling and Waste Services. Some of our efforts include standardizing waste stations at each school with clearly labeled bins for recycling, outgoing staff and student education provided by NRWS on proper recycling and composting, monthly waste audits. So that's a big thing right there, doing monthly waste audits. Several schools and several schools as a result have received awards for outstanding recycling and composting practices. Next slide. So the use of green cleaning practices with Spartan chemicals. So another thing that we're doing to impact climate change is we are using green products to the greatest extent possible, and so we're standardizing our product line across sites. We're trying to get, obviously, we want to minimize the use, but you know, using newer, greener chemicals definitely has less of an impact. Next slide. And Justin, this goes to you.
All right, thank you. The district operates school buses using alternative fuels. Napa Valley Unified School District Transportation Department has a long history in pioneering alternative-fueled vehicles in school transportation. Beginning in the mid-'90s, the district began to transition its fleet from older school buses utilizing diesel fuel to natural gas and more recently propane vehicles. Natural gas and propane buses emit fewer greenhouse gases and hydrocarbons. They also emit, eliminate particulate matter. Over the last five years, the Transportation Department has been awarded $1.5 million to purchase eight alternative-fueled school buses. Along with alternative fuels, the district has a long history in utilizing electric vehicles. The first electric school bus in the Napa Valley Unified School District was back in 1996. Of course, technology has come a long way since then. More recently, in May of 2025, we were awarded $1.8 million to purchase four electric school buses. Those electric school buses were delivered and put into service for the summer school session this past summer. They were amazing, they're very quiet, very clean, and we look forward to implementing them into the new school year coming up. Along with these practices, we've also had the opportunity to eliminate 11 of our older, less efficient buses in our fleet, as we continue to replace with cleaner alternative-fueled and electric vehicles. Next slide, please. We were also able to sign a contract with Easy Routing, which is a routing system that utilizes GPS and mapping systems to find the most efficient routes for the district's 35 routes. By doing this, we'll utilize less fossil fuels and also reduce greenhouse gases. We also continue to work with our drivers on behaviors and patterns such as reducing idling times, which also lower pollution as well. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm excited and quite proud to share with you all the impact that food service is having on this important topic. So NVUSD should be super proud of the standardized and expansive waste sorting system that you see all around campuses, including in the cafeteria, where students have the option to sort through all their waste, recycling, compost, and you'll see the same setup in the kitchens. And so my staff take the time and attention to make sure all of the organic matter gets in the correct place. And if you can imagine our volume of customers that we feed and the fresh food that we prepare, you might see some quite full green compost bins in the kitchen. So thanks to the literal heavy lifting of the custodians, we're able to compost that food. We are also in compliance with SB 1383, and this California law is around recovering edible food waste and preventing it from getting into the landfills, therefore reducing methane gas emissions. So the latest tier or phase of this law has to do with sorting organic waste matter and actual food that can be recovered and given to people to eat. So we have a fantastic partnership with Feeding It Forward, a local agency here in Napa that supports us with that, and we contact them. If we produce something in excess, or something's about to go expire before we're able to menu it and get it out, they come and scoop it up and get it back out to the community right here. So we are very appreciative of that partnership. We also have share stations in all of our cafeterias, so students can put food that they maybe are being required to take because of some of the regulations we operate under, and, but they don't want it, because maybe you know this, maybe you don't, but some kids don't want to eat their fruits and vegetables. So we have these really nice branded bins that they can put apples or string cheese packaged items into, and then other students can come and take that if they want something extra. So we love that. And this year will be our third year, third year doing Plastic Free Lunch Day. So we've kind of taken it ourselves to just do it on Earth Day, so this year it's April 22nd, and we'll be doing the Plastic Free Lunch Day. Next slide, please. If you look at these photos here, these are our reusable breakfast-in-the-classroom bags that, this is one of my most favorite projects that happened last year. So it started as a pilot, where we had just one school, we purchased these reusable produce bags. You might see them at the farmer's market, or maybe you have some of your own. And we pack our breakfast in them for our Breakfast in the Classroom program. It was so successful, and actually came from students saying, we don't want plastic. And I was like, what can we do? And so we had this idea, and it's actually been expanded to all 17 of our Breakfast in the Classroom sites. And we do anywhere from 3,000 to 4,000 Breakfast in the Classroom bags a day. So that's how many pieces of plastic, single-use plastic, we're preventing from going into the landfill. So love this project. Yeah. Yeah, thank you. Team effort, for sure. And then we also try to the best ability possible to practice values-based procurement. And what that means is we take into consideration more than just cost and quality. We ask questions like, who grew this? Where is it coming from? What's the impact of this? And we have established lots of local partnerships. We buy local bagels from Toasted Bagery here in Napa. We work with West One Bakery. And a new partner, a new local partner is Belgium Yum. It's a Belgium waffle maker here in Napa, a parent, Brown's Valley parent. And so we love doing that. And one other example I want to share is around our hot dogs and hamburgers. So you may not know this, but all of the beef that goes into our hot dogs and hamburgers comes from ranchers who practice regenerative farming. So if you have a pulse on what kid favorite foods are, they're hamburgers and hot dogs. So I love being able to share that information with people. And lastly, we do purchase organic milk from Strauss Family Creamery, and that goes into our bulk milk machines, dispensers. We have 11 of them at our 26 sites, and the kids were slightly disappointed to learn it's not a frozen yogurt machine, because that is what it looks like, but it did. They were excited to be able to drink like the coldest milk in town, because that milk is cold and organic. So that's what we're doing. Thank you.
Okay, technology. So we, at the Technology Department, we do always want to try to focus on any way we can to help reduce the district's carbon footprint. We have a lot of, we've been doing a lot of these things for many years. One of them is we utilize remote management software that allows us to preset the energy settings on all of our managed devices, and that includes, you know, Chromebooks, iPads, desktops, these are staff and student devices, the Promethean panels in the front of the classroom. We can actually set those energy settings and like enforce them. So users can't change them too much off of that set, similar to the thermostats that Rob had mentioned. So this does result in lower electricity usage and a reduced load on the grid. And one of the things that, on some of our newer devices, we actually can schedule them to turn off at night and turn back on in the morning, which then obviously we avoid them running all night. So really trying to focus on that energy usage, because in the tech world, like Silicon Valley and in the corporate world, it's just acceptable just to leave things running 24/7. And you know, we're just trying to be mindful of that impact here at NVUSD. We do try to run our tech devices as long as they are useful and helpful for all of our staff and students, but they do eventually reach sort of an end-of-life status. And when that happens, we really try to make the most out of those older devices, whether it's, you know, we have several partners where we sell those older devices back, but they're certified that they're e-wasting or reusing the pet devices instead of just throwing them in a landfill. We also do have a partnership with Napa Recycling Waste Services where we get to e-waste older nonserialized, so like not computers, but old TVs and much older equipment. We get to e-waste those for free, and they come pick it up and drop it, and pick it up and drop off a new bin for us when it's full. So that's been a huge, you know, a huge operational shift for us in the last few years. Now, we do have about 16,000 student Chromebooks in circulation right now. They are in the hands of mostly, and in the backpacks of middle school and high schoolers, and they do get damaged, and they lose keys, and they break screens. We do all of our repairs in-house by our IT staff, and during the summer, by our summer interns. So what that does is, and we don't buy a ton of parts, we actually use parts from older Chromebooks and put them in the newer ones that then are back up to usable status, and we can send them back out into circulation. So you know, what that's doing, you know, some organizations, as soon as they have a broken screen, they e-waste the Chromebook and move on to a brand-new one. We're trying to not only get the usage out of the current working ones, but then what we call Frankenstein, the ones into more working ones. So you know, that does, and not only is it a cost savings, but computer parts also are manufactured and take up valuable rare earth resources. So if we're just reusing them, then you know, we're doing our little part to make sure that, that we're not stripping the land of all those resources. So the last one is just, you know, we've been using, being an IT department, moving into digital resources for some time now, so all of our work orders, all of our shipping and receiving and compliance activities are almost exclusively digital, drastically reducing all of our paper waste. And then we did institute several years ago centralized printing at schools. It's very common about five years ago for every classroom to have its own printer, and that not only created a lot of paper waste, but a lot of- a lot of paper waste, but a lot of toner waste. So, we actually moved towards centralized printing where instead of one wing having eight or nine or 10 individual printers, there was one printer that staff would have to print to and then go grab their print job. So, that, we did see probably a pretty significant change in just the paper alone as part of those operations. And I think that is it for me. So...
All right, good evening. Speaking of paper, in the Enrollment Center, we are almost entirely paperless. So, our registration and transfer applications all live on our, in our online platform, SchoolMint. And our team sends and receives documents to and from with families almost exclusively via email, nearly eliminating the paper that we have to use during the process. So, in order to support that effort and also make sure that enrollment is really accessible to any family, whether they have access to technology or not, we have eight computer stations in the Enrollment Center to support families. There are scanners attached to them. And my team is, of course, trained to assist anyone that comes in. So, when we have families that come in and would prefer paper, we're like, "We don't have paper," but we will sit down and like do this for you so that you, you know, can have a quick, easy experience, and then we can eliminate that paper waste.
Okay. And so, in the Data Services Department, I really just want to highlight the switch to data confirmation. And I know, I talk about this often, usually within the context of collecting income information from families, which we then use to tag our unduplicated students that impacts funding. But really, this process actually started originally as a way to eliminate the need for paper with all of the beginning-of-the-year documentation. So, I remember before I got this job, when I was working at Vintage High School as an AP, we literally got thousands and thousands of papers back from families every year. They had to be mailed. They'd come back in these giant bins, and then the poor secretary spent about six months sorting and entering data into the systems. And so, we no longer do that. Now, everything happens electronically. Families log in at the beginning of every year. We actually just launched that process today officially. And so, they log in, they look at all the documentation, they can print it if they want to, they sign all the paperwork. So, there's no need for any sort of paper to be shuffled around. There's no need for any data entry. And so, it has actually saved literally thousands of papers every year by moving to this electronic process.
Dr. Blue, that was before I was a superintendent.
That was before you were super, yes, yes, of course, same time. And I was also at Vintage High School. We switched very quickly to this, I remember, after you began, Dr. Musetti.
No, not all that paper on my watch.
Not all that paper, no, never, never at all. And so, yes, this has just been an amazing process. It saves so many man-hours in terms of office staff work, eliminated the paper, just added so much efficiency. And I'll also just add that now, I believe, we're about to go into the fifth year where we've done this. We officially launched yesterday, yeah, actually, this morning, we officially launched. We're already almost 50% done with families having done this process. So, we've already, if you think about 8,000 students are almost, almost 8,000 students are finished with this process. So, this is something that's very familiar with folks. Families know how to do what the system is ready to support. And so, it's become very, very streamlined. Hardly anyone even knows it's happening, and it's still getting done. So, it's really saved a lot of time and energy and resources. With that, I'll pass it back to you.
Next slide. So, another thing that we do in the background, so we do work with Gopal Shankar from Recolite. And so, he does help the district reduce our energy usage and emissions. I think his renewal contract is on tonight's agenda, as a matter of fact. He helps monitor our solar. So, he does a lot of work with us in the background, especially with solar energy. We have a lot of projects that we're working on related to solar. One of the things we're working on also, in addition to what you see in the slide, is we need to really work on our monitoring system. And so, if we're going to get so much of our electricity from solar, we want to just maximize that, have a monitoring system, and then create talking points for the communities. We can talk about the exact amount of electricity that we're generating across all of our systems. So, that is something that we're working in the background related to that. Next slide? And so, what are our next steps? So, revisit Climate Change Action Resolution 19-29 and 24-21 with the Board Policy Committee at the upcoming meeting on 8/28, specifically the reconsideration of a Climate Change Stabilization Committee. Consider how to meaningfully involve our student climate change leaders and community in the climate change-focused work the district is implementing. So, that's something that we also want to do as a next step, and provide regular updates to board members and interested community at upcoming facilities and Technology Board Advisory Committee meetings. Next slide? And for this, a special thank you. So, a special thank you to our Communication Department, some are interns. So, Brandon and Diego for taking the pictures featured in this presentation. So, I want to thank them for all the pictures there. And they're, they're up there with Dr. Musetti and myself over at Phillips. We went to visit Phillips. And with that, I think that's it, unless there's questions. Questions, comments?
Thank you so much. I think before we go to trustee comments, I know we do have a public comment here in the boardroom, Jim Wilson.
And Mr. Wilson also brought some material for me and the board, so I'm going to go ahead and pass that down the dais here.
Thank you, Chair, President, and Trustees. I'm Jim Wilson, Napa Climate Now, grandfather, retired risk manager and chemist. What an amazing presentation. And my, the thing I'll never forget about it is, is you have a presenter, but you have your department heads presenting to you on what they're doing in their departments. And it's something that we've been pressing for, for a while, because the cities and the county and a number of jurisdictions are working hard right now to play catch-up and to do, to make, put a serious dent in emissions. And we have, we have talked about having department heads, you know, have part of their job description for their performance appraisals, reductions in emissions. And so, what are you doing to change the thinking in your department? It goes beyond the paper that I bring here today and my paper clips, but, you know, what do we do to actually reduce the heat in this room and pull, you know, heat-trapping, you know, pollutants down out of the atmosphere and restore a livable climate? And so, good for you for getting your department heads involved. And I'd like to see some graphics one day. These are best management practices. That's a big deal. But if we had some variable data, especially around energy usage, that would be very interesting to see. See if we get to 75 or 80% that we're talking about. And then have periodic reports. I'd say because we are in the early stages of a climate emergency, every 60 days, you have a report for the board and also for the community. Think of that. You know, that would be, that would be another teaching moment for the community. You were the first to pass a climate emergency resolution in May of 2019. Your students were emboldened and empowered by you all and your instruction to your superintendent to have them advocate for climate emergency resolutions in our county with their non-negotiable goal of achieving net-zero climate pollution by before 2030. We have those resolutions. And we now have a regional climate action and adaptation plan that is going out for community input. And we would like to see the schools comment on that. And that is due by September 30th. It'd be great to talk about how you're doing things and compare it to what the county and each of the cities in the town want to do. I have a handout for you today because of that last slide that you showed, which is about student engagement and the possible, say, resurrection of your Climate Stabilization Committee, which I understand was put aside during the pandemic. But it looks like you're ready to go. Napa Climate Now would love to collaborate with you, as we do with the various jurisdictions, around how to prioritize projects around, say, emissions reduction and heat reduction. And so, I have one of your students of American Canyon last night at the OSAT's commission asking for help. I have for you this copy of one of the graphs. They have many presentations. This was one to the Rotary Club earlier this year and the RCD. This is your Climate Restoration Resolution that was passed in April of last year. Thank you very, very much. That opened doors like you wouldn't believe. The students worked closely with a legislative fellow in Washington last summer, 12 months ago, and they put together a congressional climate restoration resolution, quite similar to the one that you guys adopted here. Read that, please. It's a teaching document, and every word shimmers like gold because it's true. And you can take a picture like this, which shows the Paris goal of, say, maybe 460 ppm CO2 by mid-century, if net zero is achieved globally by then. And it makes this spike a blip. We know how to do it. And we're very happy to see you all leading in that regard. Finally, we, you did support a, say, climate literacy with a climate restoration element. The students have put that together. They've discussed it with teachers, and they've also talked about it with Matt Manning. And we would love to see some forward motion on that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Wilson. Before moving on to trustee comments and discussion, is there any public comment online about this presentation, Ms. Green?
There is no public comment.
Okay, thank you. Trustees, any comments or questions about the presentation? Trustee Hart?
I just have a brief comment. First of all, it's really nice to see all of you here tonight. I think that's really cool. We don't get to see everybody at once in the same room together. And I appreciate the cohesiveness that was throughout your presentation because you seamlessly went from one to the next topic to the next. And you could see that you guys are really moving forward with one goal in mind and working together to support each other. I know technology has integrations with each of you and so forth down the line. So, just wanted to say thank you, and it's nice to see you and have you here.
Thanks, Trustee Hart. Trustee Chu?
So, I did do my data confirmation. Thank you for making it online. Oh, you know. So, I will say it is a huge change from when we started in this district. I remember registering. My oldest son had to go in line at Canyon Oaks, fill out a lot of paper. I think we all sat at the, in the, we were all in the multi-use room, and we were all just spread out on all of the tables. And it is so much nicer now. I hear people saying, "Oh, it's so much easier to register for schools, to do the data confirmation just online." I did it on my phone early this morning. I knew that it was going online, so I said, "Oh, I'm going to go and do it." And it took very little time. So, I really appreciate the seamlessness and the ease for our families. Thank you.
Trustee Water?
I'm impressed with how far we've come. I know that we were moving in that direction anyway, but there's no doubt that the students showing up at the lectern, you know, nudged us even further. We've made great strides. And there are people who might say, "Well, you're dealing with, you know, class academics, of course, sports, you know, enrichment activities for students. What is this climate business for?" And my response to them is, "Well, if we're in education, we're future-oriented people, you know. We're doing this for the people who are going to be adults and running the world." And frankly, they're going to be dealing with the outcomes of our climate crisis. When I am busy adding to the cosmic, cosmic pile, meaning I'm 75, I'm not going to be around that much longer. And we want, you know, we don't want them to inherit a crisis. I think it's important to note that our congressman has taken this up. He's, you know, this is, he's very, very interested in this. And I just want to thank all of you for what you've done. It's a great report. I actually asked Rob, excuse me, Assistant Superintendent, to send me a report about, you know, what was happening so I could have it like on a one-sheeter. And it was extremely helpful. And I know, thank you for your work with the buses. They're incredibly expensive, I know, but they certainly are efficient. And I'm well aware with what's going on in food. I can, I visit the cafeterias regularly. And, you know, kids are starting to eat their vegetables, especially if you can put tajine on them. They really seem to like that. And... I know, yeah, that's it. And it's all, it's just, you know, it's educating. It's educating them. Things are getting better. Yes, they like the cold milk. I don't hear anybody screaming for chocolate milk anymore. They've gotten used to it. And, you know, that's good for their dental health and everything else. And I'm really happy about technology. Notify the press. I said I was happy about technology because I like the fact that we're reusing things, that we're fixing things. And that's great. And what they said about making a registration, which is the first time a lot of people meet our schools, you know, we're giving them a happy introduction, you know, to the school system. And there's always, I think we've done very well. There is always, we can always improve. I think we should keep looking to improve. And I think that we should regularly remind, remind people of what we're doing. And certainly, this is something that young people are very, very interested in, very interested in. And when you explain to them about the importance of, I am the compost queen. I actually received an award about it. One, it's, you know, one of my favorite awards. And it's, when you explain to children why we're doing this and what the long-range effect is, yes, we're, in the, in the long run, we're reducing greenhouse gases. Oh, we're also improving soil health, too. That has an effect on climate. And they like that. They like to feel that they're making a difference. So, you know, good move.
There's not much I can add to what everybody has said, but while, yes, I'm happy that our legislators are looking at this, I'm happier that there's a grassroots movements here at, movement here at MBUSD and that all of you, I mean, everybody in the room, take it seriously, are dedicated, are aligned. To me, so much happens when, you know, we as a community and our youth have kind of the same ideals and the same motivations and the same goals. And when you see something that is, you know, educative and incredibly important, but has value outside of the classroom that you all have embraced and put into action, I think that's really powerful. It's such a reflection of what MBUSD does, and it's a reflection of how our student community embraces important issues, and it kind of intersects. So, I just, thank you very much.
Student board member, fish leader.
I would just like to say, especially here at Vintage, I'm seeing the changes. I'm seeing the repurpose of technology. And my parents did fill out the data registration. So, it was filled out, I think, a week ago. But I'm seeing it, and I want to say that it's thanked by everybody at Vintage and I'm sure across all the other campuses here. So, thank you.
Trustee Martin?
Echo everything you said, but I really love the thoughtfulness that while most of us can do stuff on our phones and stuff like that, that, Ms. Miller, you've included something in your training, parents, there are probably many parents that aren't as technology facile as all of us. And so, it's really, really thoughtful and really kind that you have the computers there and you can teach, teach people how to do that. But, and Kristen, my favorite meal ever was the black beans and cheese and cornbread at Canyon Oaks. Amazing.
So, I'll conclude by just, first of all, thanking Assistant Superintendent Anguola and all of these amazing directors on our team. It really shows our organization-wide commitment to having as big of a response and as impactful of a positive response to the climate emergency as we can within the constraints that we have of, you know, our per pupil spending allotment and the scarce resources in public education, but the mindfulness and care that we're seeing across the departments. I mean, we often, Dr. Reddy will say literacy is a team sport. Well, responding to the climate emergency is a team sport. And what we've seen here is our team is responding in really thoughtful and creative ways. And I also want to take a moment to acknowledge Mr. Wilson and to thank you for your hard work over many years, certainly over the five years that I've been a trustee on this board. Your support of the student activists around this issue is incredibly impactful, not just for them and what we've seen them, you know, leave our district and go on to do, but the ones that continue to be inspired by the older students. And then you're there to support them and continue the legacy and keep this to be an ongoing movement. And you are playing such an important role in empowering our... And you are playing such an important role in empowering our students to understand that they can and are making a difference, and important differences, in ways that are going to benefit all of us. So thank you for being here, and thank you for your ongoing work and support in helping and encouraging and cheerleading these amazing students. Because I think Trustee Water is right, that, you know, their impact on us impacted our response to the climate resolution and the amended climate resolution that was passed in '24, I believe. And it's a ripple effect. So then to hear you saying that, you know, this is, that we are sort of demonstrating an amazing sort of best-in-class for an organization, to be showing how we are using this climate emergency lens, and our responsibility at every level across all of our departments to make a positive impact and change, is really nice to hear. And I hope that this is a momentum builder in our community and in other communities in California and across the country. So thank you very much for your work. And Mr. Anguola and your team, thank you so much. It was so informative and inspiring, and I'm, again, feeling filled with pride for NVUSD and the hard work and thoughtful work that we do here.
Thank you.
And I'd like to just add one, just a couple of comments. Our chief communications officer is online watching the meeting, and she would kill me if we didn't take this as an opportunity to just remember Vision 2040. And I think Trustee Water talked about, you know, educational organizations should be forward-thinking and future-ready. And at the heart of our 15-year strategic vision is this idea of being future-ready. And I think that our business and operations team, through this focused work around responding to climate change via our operational avenues, is a prime example of what it means to be future-ready. And I just want to echo that, too. It means a lot. Jim, I'm going into my eighth year, and you've had a lot of presence over the years in the boardrooms, in and out. And so I do want to thank you for making us better and constantly asking the questions, because those questions have rendered us really thinking about, you know, where are the places that we can be future-ready and do this work in response to this global issue? So I want to echo that. And then lastly, to the team, they're just such an extraordinary, I love that Trustee Hart recognized that you're all here and we never get to see you. They are really an extraordinary business and operations team. And I just, this is, we're just wrapping up our, we just wrapped up our first year, they're going into their second year, reintegrated, the eight departments, plus our construction manager over there, Kelly Jurgensen at Van Pelt. And I want, I love that it was recognized that you noticed the seamlessness between the departments, and I think that has a lot to do, of course, with the leadership in the department, but just that integration and how we're able to maximize resources because of the way we're currently structured. So thank you.
Thank you.
I think we'll, three minutes early. Usually we do it at nine, but we'll break for just a five-minute stretch break. Thank you so much. Okay, we've returned from our short break, and we are now ready to recommence our meeting with item J1A, the 2025-2026 Board Annual Priorities Presentation. Dr. Masetti?
Yes, great. Thank you, President Reiser. This is our annual tradition, where I, on the public record here, at the first board meeting of the year, share with the community and remind the board, who did the work back in June, what are the annual priorities that the board has set for our organization in the upcoming school year, which then also become the criteria for the superintendent performance evaluation. So let's get the slides up, please. Okay, there we go. Oh, here it comes. We want to keep thanking the Measure B voters. Yeah. Perfect. Great. So Board Annual Priorities for the 2025-2026 School Year. Next slide, please. So just as a reminder, the board has been committed to ensuring that whatever the board annual priorities are for the upcoming year, we always make sure that they're in alignment with our vision and our mission. It's important that the board priorities, of course, help create coherence and alignment to the vision and mission, and don't lead us astray, right? Because we made this huge commitment to the community in both the long term and the short term. Next slide. And similarly, we also want our board priorities to stem from mostly the system portrait that is aimed at, of course, generating conditions for adults to do effective work. That's the adult portrait. But of course, at the center, we want to make sure that our board priorities are improving our system, so that we can ensure that our graduates are having an experience that will create conditions for them to graduate in a way that they are manifesting all of these characteristics and elements. Next slide. And just as a reminder for the public, the governance team includes our seven trustees. One of them is on maternity leave still, Trustee Gonzalez-Madis, and the superintendent. And we start this process as a governance team in January, actually, where we start conducting a midterm evaluation on the current year. And as we start analyzing how we're doing six months into the current year, we start determining and generating ideas around what might need to happen in the year ahead. Because our system in January and February already starts a lot of the planning when it comes to staffing, programming, and budget for the upcoming year. So we start those dialogues as a governance team in January and February. They occur throughout the spring. That's actually why you see on NVUSD Board Agenda Superintendent Performance Evaluation continuously placed on the agenda, because we are always in dialogue about our current year and how we're doing on the progress of our success indicators in the current year, and how that might influence and impact our decisions for the upcoming school year. So thank you. Not a lot of school boards can engage in this rigorous work. It takes a lot of time and thought. It takes a lot of strategy. It requires that the board members have a deep knowledge of the system, you know, internally, but also understanding the external pressures that school districts have to contend with. And so I'm really grateful to work with the seven board members, who are just incredibly dedicated and put a tremendous amount of time and energy into this process. Next slide. So let's just call out what the annual priorities are and then the alignment. I will not be talking about all of the individual success indicators for each of the priorities, but we do want the NVUSD community to know what the priorities are that have been set. So our first priority is implementing standard-based instruction with a focus on writing across the curriculum. And we know that that nicely aligns with our Strategy 1 in our strategic plan. Again, always seeking that alignment around making sure that we have a vertical instructional framework that guides how we teach, you know, deliver lessons, plan lessons, and teach in the classroom. And that's a work in progress. And we, of course, want to make sure that lessons that are taught across content areas are standards-based, because that's important to ensure students are prepared. And then we're really passionate about really improving student writing, because we know it's key in their success in life beyond just K-12. And then that's aligned. Next slide. We like to align it, well, what system portrait element does that priority align with? It is this area of real-world innovative learning experiences. Okay, next priority. The second priority that the board came to agreement with in collaboration with some of the staff work that was before them is to continue to strengthen college and career readiness opportunities. On tonight's agenda, you're approving the automatic college admissions for Sonoma State and East Bay. We heard Trustee Chu share about the pre-college program at Vanderbilt that is part of that larger project of the Stars College Network, where we'll be ensuring that students are college-ready and have access to some of the most prestigious colleges in the country, because they come from NVUSD and they're well-prepared. And then we also have an incredible partnership with NVC. We're working also on CTE, and we've talked so much about the summer mentor program, and so creating these career readiness and work readiness opportunities for our students. This has been a priority in the past, and I'm really grateful that the board is committed to continuity, because developing this college and career readiness culture, the opportunities, the programs to support it, to truly see outcomes we're going to need to sustain, and focus on this effort for a sustained period of time. It aligns with Strategy 2 in the strategic plan that we adopted, Systems for Career-Aligned Real-World Learning. Next slide. And again, the alignment with the system portrait is this concept of real-world learning experiences. And I think we saw that summer mentor program, that was a lot of real-world learning. Next slide. Annual Priority 3, in order to make sure that students are making progress along the way, so that they are ready for college opportunities and/or career opportunities upon graduating from NVUSD, we constantly need to be assessing to gauge where our students are, to make sure that they are on grade-level standard. And so we need to strengthen our assessment system. You're all familiar with STAR, and of course, our summative assessment of CASP. But we need to go beyond that, and we need to make sure that we have a comprehensive assessment system that empowers teachers and positions teachers to really be able to diagnose what students need across the content areas and across the levels. So we're going to do very focused work on building an articulated assessment framework, and that, again, beautifully aligns. Thank you, Board, for caring about alignment and coherence, not creating chaos and disruption in the system. But that beautifully aligns, of course, with Strategy 3 in our strategic plan around an assessment framework and a culture of student data use. And next slide. That, again, supporting real-world innovating, innovative learning experiences, making sure that our students are prepared for those experiences in their future. The fourth annual priority, next slide, is around providing learning and workplace environments that ensure physical and psychological safety. So you all remember, in the spring, we talked a lot about wanting to ensure that we had consistent safety protocols and systems across all of our campuses and satellite district sites, from here to the Ed Center, to the transportation yard, et cetera. We have adopted that system. This is going to be a huge rollout. It's safety taken to scale and standardized across all the campuses, so that physical safety component needed to be an area of focus. So thank you for making a large-scale investment and decision at the DIAS, and then making sure that it's prioritized, so we can monitor its implementation and effectiveness to ensure that the systems are actually creating that physical safety. And then, of course, psychological safety. It's all the work that we've been doing around our inclusive and welcoming schools, making sure, especially in today's world, that our LGBTQ plus students, their families, our immigrant communities, and MLLs. We know that right now, there's a sense that there isn't psychological safety in the world for them, and that it's not safe to be who they are. And here in NVUSD, we want to, we want to counter that. And so the psychological safety is really connected to Strategy 4, which is a culture, cultivating a culture of belonging throughout NVUSD, no matter who you are. Next slide. And this is a complex priority because of physical and psychological safety. So it also aligns to a Strategy 5 in our plan, because when we think about psychological safety, that also means all of the health and wellness resources that our students need to be able to feel that psychological safety. So that strategy also aligns nicely. And then there's the Strategy 7, that is about sort of district operational safety, the physical safety component. So the complexity of this priority actually aligns with three strategies in our 15-strategies strategic plan. So it's cross-cutting in three strategies. Next slide, please. And we have a system portrait alignment. When it's described, it's about our school system being a place of overall wellness and healing, both for staff and for students. The world is a complicated, chaotic place, but we really do believe our schools can be centers of wellness and healing, and we do that by prioritizing that physical and psychological safety through those three strategies. So we, again, always seeking this alignment. Next priority, Priority 5. Our fifth priority is a response to professional learning needs. As an organization that's always pursuing excellence, we want to continue to develop the capacity of our staff to deliver on socio-emotional learning, on core academics and achievement, to provide high-quality enrichment opportunities for our students, for those that are in the teaching, you know, workforce. And then we also want to build the capacity of all of our support staff. They, too, need to be professionally developed. And so in our strategic plan, we called out this unify professional learning throughout the system, thinking about professional learning for all of the employees in our organization, no matter what their role is, whether they're in a formal leadership role, whether they're in the classroom teaching, or whether they play a support role. And so that is a daunting task. It's something we're going to work on via Strategy 6 for five years. And we are planting the seeds this year of being more responsive when it comes to professional development plans, and how to track it for employees, and how we can create sort of professional trajectories for our employees. So again, appreciating the alignment, that you saw that need emerging as we talked about our strategic plan, and positioned us to prioritize the planting of those seeds. Next slide. Our system portrait alignment is innovation and leadership. As we do that work, nested in there is also, you know, we've got, of course, all of our partnership with the Arbinger Institute, which actually, you know, helps with psycho, that actually is the previous priority around psychological safety as well. But part of that work that we started a couple of years ago is really about this concept that everybody's a leader, and that NVUSD, we build everyone's capacity to lead, no matter where they are, working in the system and service to our students. And so we see nice alignment with this innovation and leadership element in our system portrait. Next one, and sixth one. So as a board, last year, we talked so much about, you know, all of the external pressures that school districts are facing. And we knew that in order to continue to protect ourselves from the impacts to the greatest extent possible, it was going to be really important for us to stay focused on fiscal stewardship, starting from the bottom up. We also know there's emerging technologies that are just expanding and changing at accelerated rates through artificial intelligence. So you see a focus here on technology integration enhancements. And then, of course, we're a school district that's managing approximately $250 million in school bond programs, Measure A2 and Measure B. So this is really a catch-all priority focused on facilities, technology, and fiscal stewardship, as, you know, there's so many changes, right, that could be threats, and we want to continue to use our resources to make sure that all of these elements between facilities, technology, and fiscal stewardship are opportunities for us to remain stable and future-ready. So there's really great alignment with the strategies in our strategic plan. We have our strategy around smart technology, planning, and responsible use. You're going to see a lot this year around AI. We have the improvement and maintenance of our facilities. You heard about Strategy 14 through Mr. Jurgensen's and Assistant Superintendent Anguola's facilities update, and you'll be seeing that live in real time as you get out to the schools, you know, in the next few weeks. And then, yep, those are the two alignments. So again, grateful for the alignment. And next slide is the system portrait alignment. We had this concept that emerged in the strategic visioning and planning process, that we need to have future-proofed and resilient infrastructure, so that no matter what happens around us to the greatest extent possible, and there's quite a bit of turbulence right now around us, that because of our future-proofed resilience infrastructure, that we are protected, that we can continue to effectively deliver on school, and that we have the technology, the fiscal resources, and the facilities to do it. Last one. What I love about working with all of you in this school board is we have a commitment that if we're going to ask for six, five to seven priorities, it's been in that range every year. This year, it happens to be six. That means we're asking the staff to work, work hard, work on six focused areas, and to deliver on the subset of success indicators that you all articulated for each of those priorities. And because this is, this is an incredible leadership team here at the DIAS, I always go back to that concept that a previous board member stated when we started developing this approach to board priorities and superintendent evaluation, which is, we will not ask change and work and improvement of our staff if we can't also ask that of ourselves as a governance team. We can never remain stagnant. We can never not be learners ourselves. And so we also look at the governance standards that CSBA puts out, and we pick one of them, and we say that's going to be our priority as a governance team in the respective school year. This year, the board wants to focus, you know, a big piece of being an effective board member is engagement and communication. member is engagement and communication at a time, and we have so much going on, so much great work happening around facilities, instructional improvement, the developing the professional development, the professional capacity of our staff. And we think it's really important for the Board to get out there, get the word out, help everybody understand the role of the school board and how the decisions that you make at the DIAS actually impact our ability to deliver on all this quality work across these areas. So, as you all know, our excellent Chief Communications Officer, Julie Bordes, has developed a formal, Board-adopted Board Engagement and Communication Plan, and we want to put that to work. And so, we have a series of mechanisms and events and ideas that we're going to be implementing throughout the whole school year to make sure that you're all out there engaging and communicating with the community about the improvement work that we're doing here in NVUSD as we strive for excellence. So, I think with that... Oh, we do have one more slide. And then, of course, there's always looking for the alignment. Our system portrait is unique because we, even though the community didn't necessarily ask for it, we sort of self-imposed this idea that the system portrait needed to have this element of proactive and sustaining governance. We have too many examples across the country right now that when the Board is not proactive and not sustaining high-quality, well-informed, data-driven governance, it brings absolute chaos to school systems, and it becomes a distraction, and we lose sight of our purpose and our why, which is our mission of education. And so, because of that, we decided to commit to this being an element in our system portrait. I'm very proud about that. I always highlight that as I talk about our system portrait. So, thank you all, again, for holding yourselves accountable to being a high-performing governance team that can support the work across these key priority areas. I look forward to being evaluated on the progress that we make in these areas, and I know that my team also deeply appreciates having a focus and knowing what to focus on and what's important to our school board so we can continue to work in partnership to make our school district better for our kids. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Masetti. Ms. Green, is there any public comment online for this presentation?
There is no public comment for the presentation.
Thank you. Any comments or response discussion from the DIAS? Trustee Water.
I think this is a good first meeting for the school, for the, you know, school year to come. It's, this is a great meeting for you to be attending, and, you know, look, look at what you've learned. You've learned about our big, our school bond projects, this, our great goal, and he saw all of the people who make things happen right there in a row. So, this is, this is good for you, but it's good for all of us. I really, I really am looking forward to Julie Bordes's communications plan and helping put that forward because we've done some good things, and people need to know about it. And what drives me crazy over the years would people would say, "What did you do with the school bond money?" Or, "You're not being transparent enough." And, you know, we're, I mean, we're so transparent, you know, our eyes, my eyeballs are ready to fall out. And, you know, I think, I think we, it's really up to us because you just can't put it out there too often. You know, people are busy, you know, people are busy, and, you know, we just have to get in their faces. And particularly in an age of social media when misinformation can just spread so quickly, you know, we need, we need to be ready. And we've got a great story to tell. I am thrilled about these schools. I mean, I was thrilled about the school bond passing, and I'm so excited about the improvements in our schools, and we are really helping children with this. So, I'm happy. Keep it up.
Any other comments from the trustees? Yeah, and I just really appreciate this ongoing annual tradition of, you know, speaking to Trustee Waters' comment about transparency, that we are proud, loud and proud about the priorities that we set and the work that we've outlined and set forth, and there's a clarity to the process that I think, to your point, is really supportive and constructive for, across the team. So, we're all rowing in the same direction with the same destination in mind, and, oh, Trustee Martin, yes, you'd like to add a comment?
As the newest trustee on the governance team, I, this idea of sustaining governance, and so, when I, like, when I came on, I realized how tight, you know, the group was, and I realized how important a steady hand in the governance team is and how powerful that can be, that we support Rosanna in doing, in doing the work that she has. So, this idea that the governance, like, the energy and the focus is sustained regardless of who comes on, or the people that do come on, they get with the program, is super important so that it provides like a stability for the rest of the organization. So...
Thank you, thank you for that insight as our newest Board member. I think it's that continuity of purpose and unity of purpose that through this process is really communicated clearly, and it does make the work sustainable and allows us to sustain the organization and the improvement work that we're always engaged in. Okay, thank you so much. So, that brings us to our item J2A, which is the Business Services School-Based Organization
All right. Okay, so, thank you for the opportunity to update the Board on our school-connected organizations. Let me make sure I'm doing this right. Okay. So, our school-connected organizations are legally separate entities from the district. So, this means they have to have their own employee identification number, they file their own paperwork with the IRS. We cannot have any crossover in those areas. And so, the question might be then, why do we have such an interest in how they operate if we are separate? Oops, sorry, wrong button. So, there are two provisions in the Ed Code. One section basically says that a school-connected organization cannot operate unless and until it receives written authorization from the governing board or designee. The other section essentially says that the public, so, non, sorry, nonprofit agencies cannot access students on campus or solicit them during certain hours. And basically, this is saying, you know, as a district, we have a responsibility to care for the students, therefore, the public does not have free access to our students on our campuses during the day. Oh, I keep hitting the wrong button. So, also, in addition to that, we have our own Board policy, and this really just reinforces the education code. But it also says that these organizations have to follow the law, they have to follow Board policy and any administrative regulations that we as a district have. And then, in addition to that, we have a responsibility to establish some rules and regulations that, for the relationship between the district and these organizations. So, as a district, we know we have a fiduciary responsibility, which is really the duty for us to act solely in the best interest of the students and the community that we serve. And this is really the highest standard of care in the U.S. legal system. And so, this also pertains to the parents and individuals that are running these organizations because they also have a responsibility to the families and students that they serve. And if you consider that they are managing a lot of resources, they're making decisions, and these resources and decisions have a direct impact on our students. And so, because of that, we have a lot of interest in how they operate. So, being that we are separate is really important to define what is our role as a district in all of this. So, there should, of course, be a partnership between the district and these organizations. We're here to provide support and education because the reality is, is that the individuals running these organizations usually have other obligations. They have full-time jobs. Maybe they don't have the business expertise to run a nonprofit. And so, that's why we want to make sure that we provide enough support so that they can be successful and operate appropriately. And then, due to the Ed Code and our Board policy, the district really does have broad authority when it comes to these organizations because you have to authorize them to operate. And without that authorization, they cannot legally operate, which also means that there is the authority to revoke, right, the ability for one of these organizations to operate. So, keeping this in mind, if there is a concern that arises of impropriety or fraud with a school-connected organization, then it would be the district's obligation to intervene. And in that case, typically, what would be done is they would be told to cease operations, documentation would be requested, and then, they would be given very clear direction and corrective action that would need to be taken in order for them to continue operating. There's also circumstances where maybe it's not as egregious, and maybe there's concerns of operations or maybe a lack of transparency. In this type of situation, we would want to come from a place of support and curiosity, so we would still reach out to the organization, probably request additional information, ask for documentation, and then, from there, the goal would be to help that organization make sure that they are operating, using best practices, meeting the standards, and hopefully, re-establishing maybe some trust that could have potentially been lost due to those allegations. And as part of this, it is really important to keep in mind that we have to be cautious to because there is always potential for allegations to arise because of interpersonal conflicts or maybe tensions, and that is not so much in our purview. We would not be in the middle of a situation like that. So, over the past year, we have had the opportunity to review a few school-connected organizations' records, and there are definitely some areas for growth. As a school district, you know, internal controls are one of the most important things. These are policies, procedures that we have in place that protect our resources and our assets by preventing, hopefully, unintentional or intentional loss. And this is just as important for these types of entities as well. So, just to provide a few examples, they really need to make sure that they have clear communication to their membership about their bylaws and any changes that maybe there might be to those bylaws. It's very similar to our Board policies. This is what governs them, so it is imperative that their membership has the opportunity to participate in any type of changes or revisions that might be made. They also really need to make sure that they have agendas that, that allow for clear communication and transparency and open communication. And these agendas should have financial information, bank reconciliations, because it's really important that the membership can see, and it just reaffirms that trust that, okay, things are operating well, our money is being used appropriately. And so, our goal would be to provide enough support and direction that we could get these areas remedied. And you have to consider that also, there's a high rate of turnover in key leadership positions in school-connected organizations, and that's just the nature of whether their students are matriculating through the system or the time obligation is maybe too much. And so, the reality is that if you don't have these controls in place, you have high turnover, you have an exchange of a lot of resources, cash, money, then you are much more susceptible to unintentional loss, but also, financial fraud is the reality. And so, you want to make sure that you put anything in place you can so that when those turnovers happen, that there is actually consistency and there's procedures and that that mitigates the potential so that it is not seen as a good opportunity for somebody to take advantage of those resources. So, we also have an administrative regulation, and actually, this has helped us kind of determine how we're going to proceed and what we can do to help our school-connected organizations come into compliance. And so, this regulation defines exactly what needs to be included in a school-connected organization's request to operate as an organization for Napa Valley Unified School District. And so, that includes, of course, you know, your basic contact information for their Board members, but they also need to share their bylaws, their procedures. They need to give authority to the district to review their financials at any time for audit reasons. They need to share their plans and their, for their expenditures, and the idea is that these expenses would be planned in alignment with the school and the district's schools and priorities also. And then, of course, they need to provide some kind of certificate of insurance coverage. So, keeping all of this in mind, we are making some changes for '25, '26. So, we have developed, which is on the agenda, a new school-connected organization manual for this year. This will be a living document that, as time goes on and based on feedback and questions we receive, we will continue to update it because we want it to be as valuable to them as possible. So, we do have that in place. We will also be requiring our school-connected organizations in alignment with that administrative regulation to submit applications, providing all the required documentation. As part of this, they will also be given a Google folder that we will share with them where they can dump documents that we will ask of them, and then, this will provide opportunity in case we do need to review anything, we can make sure that, that they are operating within alignment with this. And then, we will be, this fall, bringing these organizations that are compliant to you for official authorization to operate and represent the district in the '25, '26 school year. And then, last, we have come up with a generic email address that we plan to use for some more proactive outreach to connect with our organizations, but also to give them direct access to some business services staff so that if they have questions or need support, that we are available to provide that. So, with that, I will open it up for any questions.
Thank you so much. Before we do Board questions or discussion, I'll just ask Ms. Green if there's any public comment for this presentation.
There is no public comment on this presentation.
Okay, thank you. Seeing none, trustees?
Trustee Jaguars has something to say.
She should, because she, her comments are going to be very insightful.
I have two sentences.
Okay. That's it.
I mean, you ran a boosters organization.
This is brilliant. Please go ahead, trustee.
Trustee Hart?
All right. So, I have, I kind of have a little list of questions because my exposure to these school-connected organizations has obviously gotten greater as my experience as a trustee has gotten longer, but I have been involved with them as a parent throughout, you know, my kids' various experiences. I see that we're making changes. I think that's great because I think that lack of fiscal oversight and lack of understanding by these organizations on how to operate, period, as a nonprofit or anything, is, has been challenging, and I've definitely seen that. So, once they make that application and we've approved it, how often do they need to refresh that resource? Because I feel like within four years, you have a whole new set of parents, new, you know?
Yeah, so, we would be asking them to do some sort of application. It might not be exactly the same, but each year, they would come for renewal.
A renewal, okay.
Annually.
Got it. And then, so, it's going to become an annual thing where we try to establish that relationship with them? Do we have like an official, like, here's how to be a nonprofit organization, like, teaching, like, professional development?
We don't have a professional development say, but in the manual, we have provided links to the government agencies that would provide... links to the government agencies that would provide the proper paperwork that they need to apply for. We're certainly happy to point them in the right direction.
Gotcha.
And make sure that they have access to the right resources.
Gotcha. And as far as part of that process, I know we've talked about like having access to, say, bank accounts and things like that. Is that part of what this new system would include?
We would have access to all of their, so we would know what bank accounts they have, who their authorized signers are on those bank accounts, and then we would have all of their bank statements.
Gotcha. So we would theoretically be able to spot any kind of egregious funds going in the wrong spot or whatever. In theory, someone's looking at that, right?
Yes, there are so many of them. I would not say that we would be looking at them constantly.
Right.
You know, but our goal would be that we would spot check organizations, and then absolutely if there's ever something brought up, whether it's true or not, we would absolutely dig into financials to see.
Okay. I have one last question.
Yes.
So, say I'm an organization and I've been a booster or whatever, and I raise billions of dollars and I do all these really great things, but for whatever reason, I, it become non-compliant, and I'm no longer meeting the district's requirements in order to maintain that relationship as an organization. What happens to me as an organization and what happens to all the money that I've raised? Because that's a concern I know that we've encountered before. And so say I have a million dollars that I raise, this organization has raised, whatever happens, split ties, what happens with the money to the kids? Like, how's that?
Yeah, so we have in our manual that if an organization ceases, discontinues for any reason, or say that they are not allowed to operate any longer, that they then need to provide those funds to the school slash the district. That is their option.
Just as an adjunct, that's been in place forever. At the end of the year, oh, I'm sorry. At the end of the year, if there are excess funds that are not being spent on behalf of that organization through, it's been through the, I mean, way back when in the Dark Ages, it was through the activities office, there was an account and that money went into the account.
It would roll through. But that doesn't necessarily, I feel like that doesn't, based on my experiences on the board, doesn't, hasn't happened consistently.
That is true.
Which is why we're looking at this again and revamping it and tightening it down.
Yeah. And to say that technically they can roll their money forward, obviously the idea is that as families donate, they are having some kind of assumption that this is being spent on their students now, right?
Absolutely.
And so, there will, you know, we will provide guidance on that, but if for any reason they cannot continue to operate, it is very clear in the manual, and they will be required to sign that they have received it and that they will comply with it, that those funds have to come to the district.
Okay. Thank you.
How many school-connected organizations are there that you're managing right now? And what's the time commitment that it takes in order to manage all of these associations that are not connected with this, with the school?
There is quite a few because we have at the high school level, probably three or four per school plus at least. So plus one at least for most of our elementary schools with the exception of about three elementary schools. So, that's probably anywhere from maybe thirty plus, yeah. It is a time commitment, and reviewing an organization, especially if a concern is brought up, takes a significant amount of time. But you know, there is always the option that if there's a concern and we need to audit, as part of our manual, we have put in there that we either will audit or we will enlist at their expense CPA firm to audit if needed.
I mean, there are options. I want to thank you because, I mean, it's important work. And what I like about this, the way this has been presented, is that it is supportive, it's informative, but it's not presented as punitive. And so I think that allows parents to still be engaged, communities to be engaged, hopefully, you know, principals to be engaged, and I like the approach. I like that the manual and the guidelines are being established to maintain sustainability and safety, because at the end of the day, those two things are really important. Safety's really important, financial and fiscal safety. And so, I think kind of this construct allows the organizations to still exist, but it does give really important guidelines and framework that I think creates a relationship that didn't necessarily exist before between these entities and the district. And I think that's really important because ultimately, the district serves as an umbrella to all of these agencies and to serve our students. That is our primary goal, and they have to work within that same framework. So I really appreciate, I know it's been a long time coming and it's taken a lot of thought, but I'm very happy that we've arrived in this place, and I need to, on behalf of Joe Shunk, also say thank you.
So, I love this. I think when I first joined the board, I actually had to step off of the board of Canyon Oaks Elementary's PTO. And I know that I came into that, I went into that role not knowing how to run a nonprofit. And I think it took me a very long time to even understand what it means to be a school-connected organization. And I think this document and what you have presented, really just that learning curve is almost nonexistent with that understanding that here's our role as a school district, and here's your role as a parent organization, and this is how we collaborate. And it is so much easier when we have the same context, when we have the same framework, because that's really when you can help students and really move the needle on, you know, all the things that we want to do in common. And I think one of the things that, you know, I've always really enjoyed about being on a nonprofit that supports school is that we actually get a very close interaction with the principals also. And so, for example, and I'm pretty sure this is probably across all the elementary parent organizations, we worked very closely with the principal in understanding, here's our budget for the year, where does it go? And so, at the end of the year, we don't have this huge excess because we know here are our targets for the year, and here's our goals, and it's a common goal. It's a shared goal. And this document really just lets us be able to do that from the get-go because there is high turnover. Yeah. Yes, it is very much. Yes. Yes. Yeah, that's what I also see. I, you know, I got on the school board before my kids got to high school, so I don't cross the line into the parent organization anymore, but I do know the leaders there, and I am in communication with them. And a lot of the questions that they ask me are answered here, so I'm just very grateful that I don't have to be the one to go and search for, you know, all the different questions for them or answers for them, and that it's all here and I will just direct them to you.
Thank you.
And that email address and this particular document. So thank you very much for all the hard work in creating this resource for everybody.
And I'll just add my thanks. I think this is going to be an amazing resource. We want to encourage our parent volunteers to get, roll up their sleeves and get involved. And, you know, our students across the organization benefit so much from the funds that they raise. But what this represents is just a uniform form of support for them and guidance and also protection, because it is a lot. And it's a lot when you're talking about the amount of money that like a high school sports booster club raises. So when you're talking about that, we don't want to make it scary for parents to get involved, like, ooh, I better not because what if I mess up or I don't do the right thing? I don't want to get in trouble. And so this really gives the uniform support and guidance and also the protection so they can feel like, oh, even if I'm not an expert, I can refer to this. And the supports that you've built in with the email line and the, you know, the links for them to get access, it just puts it there in one place and does that work for them because, you know, they're volunteering and giving their time. So it just makes it easier for them to do so. And I think this is a long time in coming, and it's really, I think, going to give a lot of, hopefully encouragement for more parents to do the same and to keep on giving. And just that aspect of the turnover is so real, so it's not like, oh, I've been running this for ten years, I know how to do it, you know? If you're a high school parent volunteer, you maybe do a year or two or three or, you know, whatever, but you're not going to have that longitudinal experience where you become an expert and can pass on that knowledge. So it takes the burden off the parents, and thanks for your hard work in creating this resource to support that.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Yes, I think it will encourage people to volunteer, get involved, because I was once a PTA president, and I was always, you know, you're trying to, you don't, you want to sort of secure a decent operation of the organization. And this was, you know, an elementary school that had a poor population, and there wasn't a whole lot of money raised, but we made good use of what we raised. And I was always finding people that'd say, well, I'd like to do it, but I'm just afraid to deal with money. And I'd always think, these are the honest people, these are the ones that we want involved, you know, because they take it seriously. So this is good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to K action items. We have K1 Business Services, K1A, the NVUSD School Connected Organization Procedural Manual.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
I have a first from trustee Chu, a second from trustee Hart. Ms. Green, do we have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. Student Board Member, Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes. K1B, Services with Ares Custom Integration Services.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a first from trustee Chu, a second from trustee Hart. Ms. Green, do we have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member, Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes. K1C, Disposition Sales of Technology Equipment Surplus with Second Life Mac.
Move to approve.
Second.
First from trustee Chu, a second from trustee Hart. Ms. Green, do we have public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member, Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes. K1D, Disposition Sale of Technology Equipment Surplus with STS Electronic Recycling.
Move to approve.
Second.
A first from trustee Chu, a second from trustee Hart. Ms. Green, do we have public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member, Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes. K1E, Ratification of Agreement with Ryland Strategic Business Consulting.
Move to approve.
Second.
First from trustee Chu, a second from trustee Hart. Ms. Green, is there public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member, Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes. K2 Facility Improvement, K2A, Notice of Completion for District-Wide Fencing Phase Three.
Move to approve.
Second.
A first from trustee Chu, a second from trustee Hart. Ms. Green, is there public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member, Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes. K2B, Contract with AMS Net.
Move to approve.
Second.
A first from trustee Chu, a second from trustee Hart. Ms. Green, do we have public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member, Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes. K2C, Contract with Best in the West Construction Cleanup.
Move to approve.
Second.
First from trustee Chu, a second from trustee Hart. Ms. Green, do we have public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member, Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes. K2D, Contract with Boralji and Race for Redwood Middle School.
Move to approve.
Second.
First from trustee Chu, a second from trustee Hart. Ms. Green, do we have public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member, Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes. K2E, Contract with Boralji and Race for Unidos Middle School.
Move to approve.
Second.
First from trustee Chu, a second from trustee Hart. Ms. Green, is there public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member, Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes. K2F, Contract with Chotterian Associates.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a first from trustee Chu, a second from trustee Hart. Ms. Green, do we have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member, Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes. K2G, Contract with Chauvin and Associates.
Move to approve.
Second.
First from trustee Chu, a second from trustee Hart. Ms. Green, do we have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member, Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes. K2H, Contract with Crawford and Associates.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a first from trustee Chu, a second from trustee Hart. Ms. Green, do we have public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member, Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes. K3 Human Resources, K3A, Request to Hire Educators Less Than Fully Credentialed.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a first from trustee Chu, a second from trustee Hart. Ms. Green, do we have public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member, Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes. K4 Instructional Services, K4A, New High School Course of Study Adoptions.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a first from trustee Chu, a second from trustee Hart. Ms. Green, do we have public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member, Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes. K4B, Memorandum of Understanding with California State University East Bay.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a first from trustee Chu, a second from trustee Hart. Ms. Green, do we have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member, Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes. K4C, Memorandum of Understanding with California State University Sonoma.
Move to approve.
Second.
A first from trustee Chu, a second from trustee Hart. Ms. Green, do we have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member, Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes. K4D, Agreement with Aldea Children and Family Services.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a first from trustee Chu, a second from trustee Hart. Ms. Green, do we have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member, Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion passes. K4E, Agreement with Unbound Ed Incorporated.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a first from trustee Chu, a second from trustee Hart. Ms. Green, is there public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion passes. K4F, Agreement with Concord Theatrical Musical.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a first from trustee Chu, a second from trustee Hart. Ms. Green, is there public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion passes. K4G, Agreement with Project Lead the Way.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a first from trustee Chu, a second from trustee Hart. Ms. Green, is there public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion passes. K5, Operational Services. K5A, Agreement with Jeff Ramirez Towing.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a first from trustee Chu, a second from trustee Hart. Ms. Green, do we have public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain?